Hello and good afternoon. I'm Sally Bagshaw, and this is the reconvened meeting of our Special Budget Committee. It is Thursday afternoon, September 27th, and we're now back in session. I'd like to say thank you to Councilmember Gonzalez and Council President Harrell for joining me, and Councilmember Juarez. So this morning, we heard from our Office of Housing, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and our Office of Labor Standards. And this afternoon, we're going to be hearing from the Human Services Department and the Police Department. Thank you. Human Services, want to come up? Thank you very much. So good to see all of you. And you have seen from our sessions yesterday and this morning that there's keen interest from my colleagues, particularly around homelessness, Human Services, what we're doing to get people who are in tents into secure and safe places so that they are healthy, safe. And the Human Services Department, I'm sure we're all in for a ride here this afternoon with questions. And I also want to remind everyone that next Wednesday, October 3rd, we will be having a special budget day that's just focused on Human Services and housing, and what we're doing now, what is working, what we need to do more of to help more people off the streets. So with that, Audrey, good to see you. Welcome back. Do you want to start with introductions from your end, and we'll go west to east?
Sure. I'm Audrey Biering, Deputy Director of the Human Services Department.
It's not.
Yeah, it's on.
I can hear you now.
Yeah. Jason Johnson.
I could for a moment.
Ben Noble, Budget Director.
Jeff Sims, Central Staff.
Alan Lee, Central Staff.
Alice McLean, Councilmember Bagshaw's office.
Lisa Kay, Central Staff.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jeff. Good to see you. Jeff and Alan, Jeff, Alan will tell you that he is frequently in my office with me, asking the same questions over and over again. How do we have a systems approach to solve this problem? And Allison, thank you again for organizing us so well. Lisa, I'm glad you're here. Sorry Eric's sick, but it's great to have you as well. So who's going to lead this one off?
I can say some opening remarks if that's all right. Oh, Jason, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Okay. So I just want to provide 30 seconds of introduction. So the Human Services Department proposed budget for 2019 and 2020 runs around $195 million for the first year, and $121 million for the second year. This is an increase over the 2018 adopted amount of $176,500,000. This continues a trend in recent years of increases in our Human Services Department. And especially with this trend, we see a large increase for the Homeless Strategies and Investments Division, where our main homelessness investments reside. But Madam Chair, as you stated, today's presentation will not go into great detail on the Homeless Strategies and Investments Division. That will be, that will take place at the October 3rd meeting next week. And with that, I'll pass it over to Jason.
Great. Thank you, Jason.
Great. Adam, thank you, Council. Thank you very much for having us. I am, again, Jason Johnson with the Human Services Department, interim director, and here with Deputy Director Audrey Biering. It's our pleasure to be here, and we want to spend a little bit of time just with some context and a broader introduction of the Human Services Department and what we do. So the Human Services Department is primarily a funder. We make investments across human services needs broadly. The Human Services Department oversees funding for vulnerable youth and young adults, people who are aging or living with a disability, families with children, keeping Seattle affordable, safe, and accessible, and in support of survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. We're also the department that administers much of the investments to address homelessness. As discussed, we're not going to go into great detail about those investments today. We're saving that for next week. But it is a substantial body of work that the department hosts and administers. The department is also a direct service provider. We administer the Utility Discount Program for City Light and Seattle Public Utilities. We provide in-home case management services to thousands of people countywide. We support young people as they complete their education and join the workforce, and we engage with and help find services for people living unsheltered throughout our city through programs like the Navigation Team. HSD is also a convenor. It's important that we do this work in strong partnership with and by bringing other funders, service providers, and most importantly, the community and our customers together. We do all of this with a foundation of and deep commitment to addressing racial disparities. We also do this focused on and presented through six areas of focus. We refer to them often as our results. Those results are preparing youth for success, promoting healthy aging, supporting affordability and livability, promoting public health, responding to gender-based violence, and addressing homelessness. For the past four years, we've been working through a process of aligning our investments and our services in a way that help us better achieve these results. Audrey's going to spend some time talking through results-based accountability and that framework. But I wanted to introduce that this alignment work can have an impact on sort of budget amounts and specific budget categories. These typically result following an RFP. And to date, nearly 90% of our investments have been funded through this results-based accountability framework via some kind of RFP or RFQ. But there are also technical alignments, technical alignment changes that we make each year to better organize funding and support the desired results that I listed earlier. City Council, thank you. You codified this results-based accountability framework within the Human Services Department, this practice of very intentionally running our investments through a RFP, an RFQ, and making sure that we're results-focused in how we contract. As a reminder of why our budget contracting and partnerships with community-based organizations are reflected through this framework, I've asked that Audrey spend some time describing the framework and that process.
Thanks. So I always think about something a mentor of mine once told me. She said, "Doing government work is very simple. It's three steps. You tell people you're going to do something, you do it, and then you tell them you did it." So I'm going to spend a little time doing number three today, not in a grand way, but just a few highlights of what we've done. Like Jason mentioned, we've been on this four-year journey to drive towards results. It's not a perfect process. We're not there yet. It's very iterative, but we're proud of how far we've come. This results-based accountability framework we use, it's a very fancy way of saying, you just start with the end in mind. What's the ideal that you want to see? And then how do you step backwards from that to make sure that the things you're doing are actually aligned with the things you want to see? And so it's this methodology that we use, and I'll walk you through the steps in the slides. So we start with, who is it that we're trying to affect? So the population. So a great example is, you know, we have Aging and Disability Services, and we want to affect the 111,000 people who are over the age of 60 in Seattle. What is the result that we want to see from them, with this population? We want them to experience stable health and the ability to age in place. Indicator, why do we need this result? When we look at our data for that specific group of people, 18% of Seattleites who are over the age of 60 report that they're in poor or failing health. And then 31% of low-income seniors report that they're in poor or failing health. So that is why we need that result. Then we start to step into what strategies and activities will we perform to reach this result? And so strategies are very broad-level things, things like social support services, health promotion activities, access to nutrition. And then we start to get really granular into the activities, like maybe it's a fitness or nutrition program that's going to achieve what we want. And then finally, we put performance measures in, whether we offer a direct service or we contract out for a service. We want to know three types of performance measures. Quantity, how much we're doing. So that might be the number of people we served in a program. Quality, how well did we do it? It might be the number of people who reported feeling positive after interacting with one of the programs. And then impact, is anybody actually better off as a result of these services? And that might be the number of people who are able to maintain their independence. So those are some examples of how we step through this process. So we have a theory of change, and essentially, all the theory of change is, is this results-based accountability framework, as I stepped you through it, and then it incorporates racial equity targets. And so we step through the process the exact same way, but then when we get to the demographic data part, we actually break it down by race. We look at disparities, and then we identify focus and priority populations as a result of the disparities that we're seeing. So we collect a ton of performance measures. Our goal is by 2020, we want to have all the contracts that we have performance measures in them. And so what's been happening is every time we want to run a competitive funding process, that's our opportunity to identify what those performance measures are, put them in contracts. And so by 2020, that's when hopefully we will, all of our contracts will have been through that cycle. And so depending on the program, we have different performance measures for each. So we collect just many, many performance measures. But what I'm going to do today is walk you through, we realized that in order to talk about our work, we need to kind of identify some key performance measures for each of our six impact areas, and so those are the ones that I'm going to walk you through today. So on this slide, we're looking at preparing youth for success. And one of the measures we have is the number of youth that we place through, in internships through our program. Our 2018 goal was 400, and status of July is 363. That's also our projected performance because the program has just wrapped up, and now the projected matches the actual. The reason we didn't meet our target 400, we're hypothesizing, is that we had a change in our model this year, where we moved from a year-long program to just a summer-only program. So we serve fewer youth because of that limitation. The percentage of family resource center participants who report that they got improved individual and family skills related to parenting and family interaction, our goal was 80%. Status right now is 100%, and we project 99% performance. So we're exceeding what we had targeted. Under the Supporting Affordability and Livability bucket, we measure two things, two key things for the purposes of this presentation. One is the number of households enrolled in the Utility Discount Program. The goal was 34,000. Status is 32,560, and the projected is lower. The reason it's lower than our goal and the status is that we recently completed a reconciliation between our department and City Light, the customer database there. We lost about 3,000 customers over the years, a lot of them who have moved out of the Seattle City Light SPU service area. But this is the first reconciliation we've done in two years to understand that we lost those customers. So that's the reason for the lowering of the number.
Audrey, can I ask you a quick question here for a moment? So we had a little presentation about UDF yesterday when SPU and Seattle City Light were here, and everybody concurs that we've made a big jump over the last couple of years, number of people enrolled, and congratulations and thank you for that work. I'm curious about, have we reached out to King County to be working collectively as they're giving out Orca passes? Because my hope, and we talked about this in budget year last year, was that UDF and Orca passes could be consolidated so that a family wouldn't have to go to multiple different agencies if they're trying to get the assistance they need. Can you just give us an update on that? And if you can't do it today, if you'll get back to us in the next few days.
My understanding is that those benefits, if that's the right word, are well-coordinated. In fact, if you go through the qualification process for one, that is evidence that you have qualified for the other, and we don't put you through that process again. But let me make sure that I confirm that and give you full information.
That'd be great, because one of the things that we heard last year in particular about UDF, if you're dealing with like water, for example, is that everybody who was living in the household, their income had to be devolved. And you got a benefit per household based upon the income or revenues received from everybody who's in that household. Contrast that with an Orca pass, simpler because you're only dealing with one individual. But I'd like to know whether or not we actually followed up to make sure that we are making sense about what's available to people. Thank you.
Yeah, the mayor has really pushed this idea of when someone needs affordability services, if they're accessing one, they should be accessing all of them, right? And so we do feel like that is our task, to conduct outreach with all the other agencies providing these services. And a great example of that is Seattle Housing Authority, when we coordinated with them to make sure all of their eligible participants would also be getting UDP services.
That was great.
So we'll confirm, but my suspicion is, yes, they've done that outreach.
All right, thank you.
So the second one, under affordability and livability, is the number of emergency meals provided. Our goal was 439,409 meals. Our status as of July was 704,281, with a projected performance much greater than that at over 1 million meals. The reason for this is that we, our goal is always how much, how many meals we contract for. What ends up happening is agencies are able to use our money and then leverage other money. And then we also had an increase in the sweetened beverage tax, or we had more revenue than we thought this year. So the combination of them leveraging other monies plus increased revenue got us to put out way more meals than we thought we would. And then agencies always report out the meals they served regardless of where the funding source is. All right. Okay. Then, under homelessness, we have one key measure that we've highlighted as the most important, and that's the number of people who are exiting to or maintaining permanent housing. 7,400 is our goal. Our status so far is 4,0459. We feel we're on track to reach our goal, and we won't spend a lot of time on that today as we've mentioned several times now. Promoting healthy aging, two measures that are key here are the number of family caregivers that are engaged. Our goal is 950. We've done 609 as of July, and we feel we're on track to meet our goal. And then the number of vulnerable adults receiving long-term case management. The goal is 11,497. We are right now serving 11,411. The projected performance is the same as our current status. It's a standing caseload. The state pays us for, they assess and they pay us for how many cases they think we're going to manage, which is where we get our goal from. And then we have people drop off or sign up throughout the year, but this 11,000 some represents just our standing caseload.
Great. Can you just address quickly for me on this, promoting healthy aging? Within your department, how does the Age Friendly Group interact with this particular work? Because I know Irene Stewart and others, and I really appreciate and want to say thank you for the focus you've had on Age Friendly and the Mayor Durkin for re-upping us as an age-friendly city. How are we combining those efforts within your department?
So I really think of the Age Friendly Initiative as, they have the overarching view of everything in the city. They're working not only with, it's almost like HSD is a client of the Age Friendly Initiative. They're working with us and SDOT and OIRA and all the different offices and departments to ensure that we have a holistic response to make the entire city age-friendly. And so the way I would see it then is that these programs in HSD are a subset of what Age Friendly is looking at as an initiative. Does that get at what you're asking?
Absolutely. Thank you, and it's an important umbrella, and I appreciate the work they're doing.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question. Audrey, the performance measures for promoting healthy aging here, are these related to the Area Agency on Aging? And so do these numbers, for example, reflect countywide, or are these city?
These are countywide, correct, because we are the Area Agency on Aging, so that we serve the entire county.
Thank you.
Yes. Supporting Safe Communities, the number we want to highlight today is the number of domestic violence, sexual assault, and commercial sexual exploitation survivors receiving support services. Our goal is 4,141. Status is 2,690, and we are on target. We're actually, we think we're going to exceed the goal this year. And then finally, promoting public health. You know that we have a contract with King County where we contribute money to get Seattle-specific services. Sort of like, King County provides the base level, we provide enhancements to that plan. And so the number of primary care medical visits provided to low-income individuals in Seattle, goal is 187,000-plus. We have 113-plus served now, and we are on track to meet our target.
Your question?
Yeah, please. On the category relating to supporting safe communities, does the department, these are a lot of different categories in here, so domestic violence, sexual assault, commercial sexual exploitation survivors, a lot of nuance in between those categories of survivors. So do you have a sense of how the number of folks that we've helped, 2,690, have accessed services, how they fall into those respective categories? We do have more detailed data, and so we're happy to provide, we can go back after this and provide you more broken-out data on that. It would be wonderful to get a better understanding of sort of the type of support service that is being received and for what purpose. That would be really helpful. I know that you all just did the gender-based violence, RFP, and so I just want to make sure that I get a solid understanding of the interplay between what I'm seeing here under the Supporting Safe Communities and what the department just did under the gender-based violence, RFP. Yeah, we will circle back with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay.
All right. So the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt one more time? I'm so sorry. I forgot to ask a quick question on that particular topic, which is, last year, I think, or maybe the year before, I advocated for the inclusion of some funding for legal services to be provided to DVSA survivors. And I notice in the budget, this proposed budget, I think it's on page 167, under the baseline changes, it looks like that funding is no longer going to, is proposed to no longer continue. Can you tell me a little bit about why? I'm trying to recall if this was, this was a one-time funding that was allocated? Because I know that some of the ads you put through were ongoing, which would have just then become part of our base. I was trying to recall. It is characterized in the budget book on page 167 as, quote, "one-time ad for legal representation of DV survivors," close quote. And so it is just identified as one of the areas of funding that will no longer advance through this proposed budget. And I'm asking why or what was the evaluation of HSD that led to the conclusion that this should not be a permanent program? Yeah, I would say, short story is that we had a lot of one-time ads last year, and then just a lot of competing priorities this year. So it was part of a larger process that we went through, a very long process we went through, to identify where we need to cut, where we need to prioritize. And so in that process somewhere, it was, you know, this is a one-time, I don't think we prioritized any one-time ads outside of homelessness this year. I was hoping you were going to tell me that it was because they got transferred over to the gender-based violence, RFP, but it sounds like that did not happen. So I'd just like to get a little bit, I guess, to get to the point, I want to know whether or not it was discontinued because it was an unsuccessful program, or if it just has more to do with the fact that you all were looking for efficiencies, and this was a one-time ad that isn't directly related to homelessness that you determined could be cut. Yeah, so we'll, let me go back and find out the contracts that are funded in that area right now, and give you that list, and then you'll be able to, and then we'll look at the programming as a whole, and then we can make the determination of where, how much funding right now we're putting to that, and that'll help you in your process. That would be, that would be helpful. And part of the reason why I'm spending some time on lifting this up in this conversation is that I've heard very loudly and clearly through my participation in the Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Prevention Council, that domestic violence and sexual assault is one of the most significant contributors for women and their families entering into homelessness to begin with. And so I want to make sure that we're not eliminating funding under the auspices, that it's not directly related to homelessness, when in fact, it is funding that could potentially prevent women and families from entering into homelessness through legal representation and identification of resources with that type of legal assistance. And so if you could help me understand that nuance, that would be really tremendously helpful to me. Yeah, definitely. And I think it's more about making tough choices about any time we have a one-time ad. It's, we have to figure out, how will we continue that? And so it's more, I think generally, it is difficult to continue one-time ads, is the short story, but we'll get you more information on that.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you. Okay, move on to addressing affordability.
Great, thank you. So the mayor's priorities and her strategies going into 2019 align really well with the six results or focus areas that I highlighted are sort of embedded into the department's work. Starting, and I'm going to sort of go through those four priorities and highlight a couple of key areas. One, addressing affordability. So we, Councilmember Gonzalez, we often refer to many, all of our investments in the Human Services Department as homeless prevention. Sort of like, if very important aspects of the provider network, of the human service sort of sector as a whole are not working, the outcome is often, far too often, that people fall into homelessness. And so addressing affordability is a key strategy that we wanted to highlight here, and we do that a number of ways. We are increasing food access through community-based meal programs, as well as programs that focus on nutrition education, fresh bucks-to-go programs, expansion of food access, and a Food Access Opportunity Fund, which would be funded through the sweetened beverage tax revenue. So there's more opportunity to address hunger, given that we have additional revenues through the sweetened beverage tax.
I would doubt that that Food Access Opportunity Fund is actually one of the specific recommendations of the advisory group, so a number of those items have been funded even as we directed some of the money to other purposes.
Your backside, if I may?
Okay, please, go ahead.
On the, first of all, I'm really excited that we have this revenue source, and that it's, that thanks to the leadership of many on the City Council, but Councilmember Juarez in particular, who advocated very staunchly for food access and prioritizing food banks and otherwise. And so, you know, through the work that I've been doing in my committee on education-related issues, one of the things that we identified as a significant need in that context is the need for these types of food access programs to be deployed in our Seattle Public Schools system, just to be able to really address the lack of food access to students, particularly those experiencing housing instability. And as we know, they're, according to the last numbers, you know, one out of every 16 students within the Seattle Public School System is currently experiencing homelessness. And so I'd like to get a sense from you if any of these programs that you have described in the budget paper and on this slide are designed to address food access issues for students who are experiencing homelessness.
Do you want to talk about the potential of the Opportunity Fund?
Go ahead. So I'll circle back to you on the specific question about schools, but I did want to highlight that the sweetened beverage tax is also going to fund a Food Access Opportunity Fund. And we're really looking at that fund as a way to maybe see some new agencies, people we haven't funded before, smaller agencies who are trying to build their capacity, people have innovative ideas. So that, we're hoping, will be an opportunity to get some good partnerships going. But we will also look into your question about schools specifically. I appreciate that. There are some models in other schools throughout Washington State that have incorporated and folded in food pantries, for example, into public schools. I think the city of Spokane has that type of a program. And I think as we're thinking about how to maximize the opportunity for food insecure folks, it's important for us to take into consideration that that population also includes students who are attending our public schools, and making sure that we're taking the food pantries to them as opposed to requiring them to go to a particular place, is, I think, an additional strategy to really fulfilling the intent and the motive behind making sure that we have this that we have this food access programming funded through the sweetened beverage tax.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. So this question that I have could fit into the address affordability bucket or could also fit into the address homelessness bucket. Last week, in my Civil Rights Utilities Economic Development and Arts Committee, we heard a report from the Seattle Women's Commission called Losing Home: The Case... The Cost of Eviction in Seattle. And in that report, just some high-level facts. Women were more likely to be evicted over small amounts of money. Of single-tenant household cases where a tenant owed $100 or less, 81% were women. 51.7% of tenants were people of color in eviction filings. 31.2% were black tenants experiencing eviction at a rate 4.5 times more than what would be expected given their demographic. And 86.5% of evictions were for non-payment of rent. And of these, 52.3% were for just one month or less of rent. And taking a look at what happened after these folks were evicted, and they, you know, they reviewed over 1,200 cases from the last year. Most evicted respondents became homeless. 37.5 ended up completely unsheltered. 25% ended up living in a shelter or transitional housing. And 25% staying with family or friends. So that's about 88% ending up homeless after their eviction. One of the prime... There are a lot of legislative recommendations coming out of this report as it relates to rights for tenants. But one of the budgetarian sort of city process recommendations relates to how we fund rent assistance for tenants who need help with their rent and how that rent assistance is delivered to tenants. And primarily, there's a concern that many different organizations receive funding to provide rent assistance to tenants. So that means there's not a one-stop shop. And then additionally, there's a really strong feeling that having a service provider who has access to rent assistance really it'd be incredibly important for that person to be placed within King County Superior Court. So when somebody is needing help, that there is a resource there. So I just... I want to flag those issues. And to help move some of them forward, I would really like to have more detail about the number of agencies we fund to provide rent assistance and how much we fund for each of them.
We can certainly get you that information. And we're also currently thinking about redesigning our tenant services and running that as a competitive process. So this is great information, and we'd love to think more about this as we design this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before Councilmember Sawant, just following up on Councilmember Herbold's point. This morning, we touched with Office of Housing very briefly that in their budget this year, they have over $11 million that is supposed to be available for these kinds of services, rental assistance and that. So I've been very heartened this year that this is part of our prevention area, that we know if we can keep people in their homes or at least housed in some way that protects them and their families, that it makes everybody better off and it reduces the other monies that we're spending within the system. So I'd love to get this together, because this is... The system change and the system investment is the name of the game here. Thank you. Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you. Just to follow up a little bit more on the points that Councilmember Herbold brought up. I mean, more specifically, last year, the council amended the mayor's proposed budget to add $200,000 for tenant outreach and education and so on. At least the intent from my office, which we had made very, very clear, was that we wanted these funds specifically to go to organizations like the Tenant Union and Washington Community Action Network because... specifically because of the kind of work they do. But I believe most of that money, or if not all, went to solid ground. And certainly, there should not be, you know... It's not a competition between two different agencies that provide valuable services. I have no question that solid ground does provide valuable services, but we're talking about the kind of outreach that Washington County does in order to really lift up renters. I mean, this... It's no accident that that organization played a big role in winning the move-in fee legislation, which was recently upheld by the Superior Court, and also the study that Councilmember Herbold described. So one question I have is, what kind of thinking went into making that decision last year? And also, this year, do you have... Does the mayor have money allocated for tenant services specifically? Because I'm not clear if that's true or not, and if you could just go into that.
So to answer the last piece, we have money in our base budget for tenant services. And so that's what I mean when we're going to... We're already contracting out for those, but we want to re-envision how to use that money. And so we are starting to think about designing a competitive process so that... because this money's been out in same contracts for a long time. And so we want to make sure that the money is still... is being used for the right needs that we have in our community now. So we're starting to think about, how do we redesign the way the money's used so that it's meeting our current needs?
But in my view, you didn't do that. When you didn't give money to organizations that are actually doing that outreach, it didn't achieve the purpose. So I'm not clear what you mean by you want to... What is it exactly that you will do with tenant services funds in the coming year to make that decision better? What will be the metrics for that? And am I hearing you correctly that you're saying you'll have a bidding process for that, a competitive process? So if you could go into the logic of that as well, like why you're doing that and what it helps to achieve? And also some numbers, like what range of dollars are we talking about for tenant services?
Yeah. So since 2014, that's this... You know, we've been talking about this results-based accountability framework. This is the idea that we would take contracts that have longly... or long not been competitively bid out. It's just been, you know, the same agencies would get the same amount of money for the same services for 10 years, 10-plus years. So four years ago, we started thinking about, okay, the needs of our community are much changed from 10 years ago or 20 years ago, and we really need to start thinking about refreshing it and rebidding this money out in a competitive process so that it's designed in a way that meets our needs of the community as it looks today. So in 2014, we started with two different programs, and every year, we've started adding on and adding on. And by next year, we're hoping... Next year, 2020. By 2020, we're hoping to have bid all of our contracts out so that we are realigning our contracts with the current needs, the way it is now. We historically funded tenant services, but that pot of money has never been through a redesign process. And so we've just continued to hold the same contracts year after year after year without really thinking about, do these contracts now reflect what we want to do? And so when I mention this sort of design process, that's what we want to do, is really assess what are actually the needs in the community? How do we... What are the gaps between what we're funding and what those needs are? And then how do we rebid those contracts out?
Thank you. I have to be honest, that didn't really give me much substantive information, but that's fine. I won't press on that. But just one question that is related to this is, would it make more sense for this aspect of the work, you know, tenant services outreach and so on, to be under the purview of the Department of Construction and Inspections? Because they work directly with organizations like Tenant Union. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think it could be a good fit for that department. I think that they have touchpoints directly, direct touchpoints, that we don't necessarily have. That said, I think we have community-based organizations that are engaged with people, people living in poverty, who are unstably housed on a regular basis. And I value and believe that they are high-quality engagements that these community-based organizations that we contract with are having. The, you know, bidding process that Audrey was describing is how we ensure that a organization has the means, has the ability to do direct outreach to the very population that we hope to have an impact on. And so I think this, you know, description of the RFP, our results-based accountability RFP, is how we attempt to make sure that we're making investment in organizations that we think can do this critical work. So I think that, you know, there's a sound argument to be made that those investments are brought sort of into the city where some of those touchpoints are made. But I think that more often, there are... There's a level of trust and known access that vulnerable populations have with our community-based organizations.
And I just would like to follow up on that, and I'll get you, Councilmember Herbold. What Councilmember Sawant said is something that I'm very interested in as well, which is, what are the performance measurements that we're using? And by doing this bidding process or request-for-proposal process, are we extending our reach to make sure that others in the community have an opportunity to make their proposal and make their best case on why they are the agency that ought to be funded? And the... One of the points that you made on one of the first slides is, when we're measuring this, is anyone better off? And that's really the test here that I hope that we're focusing on, is at the end of the day, because of our measurements and because of our work, is somebody better off because that we've made that investment? And if we can't say yes, then I think it's time to look at that again. Thank you very much. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. As it relates to developing a tenant services RFP, I think it's... And I think this is something that we highlighted last year. I thought we maybe did a sly about it, but it may have been one of the ones that we withdrew, because there were so many sly's that we were sending your way. But I think it's really important to recognize that there are different competencies for different types of tenant services in our community, different core missions. And there are different organizations that do different things, but when taken as a whole, hopefully, there's not too much duplication of services, but that we're creating a comprehensive strategy for addressing tenant needs. And so there's... I mentioned earlier, there's rent assistance. There are agencies that are really focused on connecting tenants with rent assistance. There's information and referral. There's giving folks expert information about their rights as tenants. And there's tenant outreach. And I just... I think it's important when developing an RFP for these funds that we really consider and value all of these different components of tenant services. And you might want to think about asking the agencies that provide these services or may want to provide these services in the future to apply as a collaborative and looking... And so you say the services that the city wants and realizing one agency may not provide all of them, give a group of agencies the ability to apply together. I think that is an approach that is worth taking a look at, and it's an approach that was used probably 20 years ago.
Madam Chair, I'd like... Madam Chair, I'd like a call to order for Mr. Zimmerman to have a seat and leave the clerk alone.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, would you please take a chair and not just wander around the front? Please, sit down.
Hey, Mr. Zimmerman.
Ladies and gentlemen, the... Oh, God.
I'm going to ask you one more time.
I just...
I'm asking you one more time to sit down, Mr. Zimmerman, and leave the audience alone. Thank you. Councilmember Herbold, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you have something else?
I apologize, too. I'm sorry.
Chair, I ask that we bring Mr. Zimmerman into order in these chambers. He is clearly interfering with the rights of others and harassing other members who are trying to attend this public hearing and to listen. And I'd ask him to either sit down or be removed.
Thank you very much.
And Chair, I'd like to add that Mr. Zimmerman does not own those two seats. Him asking people to get up and leave and move because those are his two seats, if I can make a point of order for the record, that those seats are not his seats. And I'm sorry that you had to be moved.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, we have just, in your moving about, asked that you sit down, not interrupt the other audience members.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you, security, for being there. If we have any further trouble, I'll ask to have him removed. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Juarez and Gonzalez, for bringing this up. Okay. Councilmember Herbold, did you have something you wanted to finish?
I finished my request. I don't necessarily need a response, but it's just a request that you take a look at that model.
Thanks.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay. Go ahead and continue, please.
All right. Thank you. So continuing on affordability, it is important that we invest in transportation, community resource, referral, and family caregiver support to ensure that seniors and people with disabilities have access to basic needs and can age in place. So this is... We talked a little bit when we were looking through the performance measures of especially and primarily of our case management work that we do candy-wide to help keep people safe, stable, and healthy in their own homes and away from expensive institutions.
Great. Thank you.
I think delivering on essential city services, this is... The budget in front of you proposes a 2% inflationary increase adjustment for all general fund support for service provider contracts in 2019 as well as an additional 2% in 2020. This is an acknowledgement that the price of business is going up, that wages are low for some of our nonprofit organizations, and this is intended to help with some of those increased costs. Likewise, we are... In order to deliver essential city services, you'll see that there is ongoing funding for some of the new or what's often categorized as one-time funds to stand up additional shelter capacity in our homeless system. There was sort of two efforts in 2018 that are continued in this budget. One was a continuation or a bridge for some programs that were defunded during the 2017 RFP. Likewise, occurring now is an effort to get 500 new places, new safe places, for people to go, adding to the shelter capacity by 25%. And that was done through the sale of the communication shop. So in the budget, again, in order to make sure that essential city services are in place, there's a commitment to keep these programs going, these basic crisis response programs that are critical, especially for those living unsheltered.
Great. And I know we're going to talk about this more next Wednesday, but this is an area for me, it's some of the most important investments that we can make. What we know is for people to be safe, that the Housing First model is a nationally recognized effort. I'm not sure that 500 new beds are going to be anywhere near enough. It's way better than living in a cardboard box underneath the viaduct but then be able to have the capacity, as we all have been talking about, of moving people into permanent supportive housing. The numbers and the dollar amounts that is going to be taken regionally to accomplish that is way more than the city ourselves can afford. And as we've spoken before, and I've said it multiple times today, the city of Seattle can do anything, but we can't do everything. And this is where we need to have that partnership with King County and with the state of Washington and the private sector and philanthropy to really come to grips with how much it's going to take to be able to move people from the street into a safe place where they can have the services that they need. So, man, I feel like I've just been riding this horse for years. I'm thankful to you that we've gotten so many more hundreds of 24/7 beds. I don't think we're even still scratching the surface on what it's going to take.
Okay. So build safer, more just communities. So there is an increased investment in domestic violence, legal assistance, and better intervention. And this is an important continuation of work that's being done collaboratively with King County, with courts, with police. And I'm excited that there's a level of staff support to support this work continuing. Again, we're going to be talking in great detail about the final priority around addressing homelessness on October 3. But I think it is important to highlight that, sort of restating that we have in this budget a continuation of a number of one-time-funded programs in 2018. These are programs that include things like hygiene centers, the Women's Referral Center... These are programs that include things like hygiene centers, the Women's Referral Center, case management, behavioral health positions at encampment sites, et cetera. And so I just wanted to flag that those, continuation of those programming, of that programming is, is included. Likewise, there is, has been a consolidation of the city's navigation team at the Human Services Department. There is budget in here to expand that team, likewise, to have a very specific and targeted focus on vehicular response. There's a great increase in the number of people living in cars and RVs across our city, and we want to make sure that we are using our outreach services, our outreach teams throughout the city in a targeted fashion to make sure we're meeting their needs.
Good, and I would just like to ask one more thing of you going forward, is a comparison of the 90 million that we're spending, or close to 90 million on homelessness and services and housing across the board, comparing that to what was reported last week in San Francisco of roughly triple that, $284 million. So I'm, I'm wanting to know, what's it going to take for us? And I recognize that I keep referring to the need for a benevolent dictator and a whole lot more money to do this, but what's it going to take to really make a difference so that people are not sleeping on our sidewalks in tents? And what do we need to do? And what does this council need to do to support you in getting there?
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. On the navigation team expansion, the budget overview states that the three patrol officers for the expansion, three, three patrol officers and one sergeant will actually be coming out of existing patrol capacity. Can you confirm that the budget doesn't add additional funds for that?
That's correct. I mean, in a moment, we'll talk about, as we bring up SPD, talk about the officer ads there, but those are generic ads and, but yes.
All right. Couple others related to navigation team. There's an additional $460,000 in the proposed budget for outreach, or, sorry, not for outreach, for contracted case management and behavioral health positions. Will that money be RFP'd or added to existing contracts?
That'll be added to existing contracts. The next homeless investment RFP is in 2020.
All right. And then the final question about the NAV team is there's also a proposed increase of $171,000 for outreach and $200,000, well, two, two different outreach buckets, one for the navigation team expansion and another one in, another $200,000. And it's not clear how those two outreach ads relate to one another.
Are, are you looking at the budget page?
Uh, yes.
Can you tell what page you're on?
I'm looking at notes from the budget page. I don't actually have the budget page up.
If I, if I might pipe in, maybe the $200,000 is related to the mid-outreach.
Yes.
So I believe that's dedicated to the Downtown Seattle Association's mid-outreach program.
Okay.
Correct. So we have two outreach expansions underway. One is expansion of outreach that is tied to the navigation team. So that work is currently being done by Evergreen Treatment Services and their REACH program. And then separately, there is a expanded level of outreach that the DSA MID team will do, leaving their traditional sort of downtown jurisdiction, and this fund will expand into the neighborhoods on the east side of I-5, including Chinatown International District, Little Saigon, as well as First Hill and Capitol Hill.
So those are actually MID funds?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then I have one question about the RV remediation pilot. The proposed budget includes $570,000 in funding across three different departments, SPUSDA and FAS. I'm just wondering whether or not there's funds in HSD's budget as well for the remediation pilot, and what you can tell, tell us about what that, that's going to do.
Go ahead. Yeah, so, just give me a minute, because we have this, right? Right, yeah. Yeah, so HSD has a additional funding of $250,000 for vehicular response. And when we come back in front of you on the 3rd, we'll present with the other departments what that strategy could look like.
Perfect, thank you.
And finally, our question is, as we move into the numbers, I wanted to provide a little bit of clarity about some information that's in the budget book itself and not on the screen, but which could lead you to confusion as you, as you dive into those numbers. And the comments relate, in the end, to some structural changes we made as we moved into the new accounting system. And there are two general issues I wanted to highlight that, that impact HSD. One is, in an effort to be more transparent about the administrative, and if you will, overhead costs for departments, we have, in many places, created, well, it may have existed before, but, but we have allocated into the line that you'd see on page 174 of the budget, if you happen to have it open, called leadership and administration. So that is the, the core, undoubtedly includes Jason's salary and the like, but then also the accounting functions of the department and the like, what it takes to kind of move, to make department move day to day. Those aren't new costs. In the past, they were allocated across the other budget control levels. Again, for sake of transparency, we've tried to, we've made it very clear what, what those costs are. But that means, as you look across the budget, you'll see reductions, or rather, if you see an addition in another area, it may be understating the true addition, because some of the costs that had been previously allocated there had been moved into this administration, now called BSL. So I just wanted you to see that and understand that that was, it's a difference from last year, it makes it a little harder to change, to track the changes year to year. That, the harder to track wasn't the goal. Being more transparent about, if you will, overhead costs was the goal. So that's just one piece, as you look at the budget book, to understand. Another is that, that in setting up the new accounting system, we also took a look at the way programs had been allocated to the various budget control levels or budget summary levels, and, and in some cases, we've reassigned them. So another area that has caused confusion, and confusion that candidly regret at this point, is in, in some of those reallocations. So for instance, and I'm now lost my page, but on page 182, there's a budget summary level, the language previously would have been budget control level, that deals with preparing youth for success, and it has several subprograms, two of which are safety and youth development. And if you dig all the way into here, it would appear that we have significantly increased funding for safety and significantly decreased the funding for youth development. We have done neither. What we have done is allocate programs that were in the one bucket before and into the others, we thought they better aligned to, to those descriptions. Again, we were, we had an opportunity to realign and try to be more clear, and we took that advantage. I think we did not do a good enough job explaining that those, those shifts, that they weren't, again, using my language, they weren't real in the sense of, you know, changes in funding reductions, but rather in the way we are characterizing and grouping the funding, so.
So it's an accounting issue, not a change of services?
Exactly.
So the approximately $3 million reduction that we see in the youth safety program, it is all in the youth development program?
It's actually, it's, it's the reverse.
The other way around?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And I have the list of.
An increase, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that, there's, none of the money goes anywhere else, it just is divided up into these two buckets.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Can you continue, please?
Yeah. So this slide just highlights the changes that have occurred. I think Alan did a good job in his opening, talking about the sort of steady and regular increase in investment to support our citywide effort to address homelessness. This 2019 versus 2018 represents a 10% total increase department-wide. You'll see there's also a increase in the employment or FTE, number of staff, that will be working in the department. Much of those positions are grant-funded and already incorporated into the department this year. The 2019 budget just continues that funding and offers the pockets to make those positions permanent.
So it's a pretty big jump from 2016 to 2020. There's about 50 FTEs. Can you describe what those 50 FTEs are going to be targeting?
So at a very high level, many of them fall, anytime we get grant funding from the state for Aging and Disability Services, they often come with pockets, with staff that we can hire to administer funding. So a lot of them are attached to that. I can get you a specific breakdown on what those positions are.
I think it would be useful, because when folks say, well, there's 380 people who are working in Human Services Department, yet we're contracting out a considerable amount of money, the question always arises, what are they doing? So if you could just give us a breakdown, and we do, we're well aware that we've got many folks that are administering contracts, love to see in what departments they fall.
No problem.
Thanks.
Okay, so in sharing some of the legislative or policy framework improvements that have been made over the past year, I wanted to highlight three, three activities. First, as I mentioned at the beginning in my opening statements, I'm thankful and very grateful for council support in ordinance 125474, which codifies the Human Services Department's results-based framework, making, which, which defines how we make contract and investment decisions. Likewise, in 2018, we launched the Age Friendly Seattle Action Plan. That's a four-year plan, really focused, focused on some specific activities that'll help Seattle become a place to live for all residents of all ages. So primarily, that body of work sits in our Aging and Disability Services Division, but its intention at its core is to make this a, a better city, a more accessible city, an easier city to live in for all populations at all levels, at all, at all ages. Excuse me. Likewise, I wanted to highlight, in 2018, the department has been under audit. We have been audited by the city auditor. That includes the audit of the navigation team activities, as well as the performance of our homeless investments. We've also undergone audit, regular audits from HUD, and likewise, we just completed a, they refer to it as a scan, but it was essentially an audit of our strategies and policies by the National Alliance to End Homelessness in partnership with HUD. Likewise, we're currently being reviewed by consultants focused strategies. They're looking at doing a homelessness system analysis and accountability review. And so I just wanted to highlight that this sort of continual auditing of the department in 2018 has impacted both work quality as well as morale. It's also been extremely expensive. These audits, a conservative estimate of staffing cost for these audits is roughly $600,000. So we are, you know, grateful for the support, and I think we're doing everything we can to be as transparent and as open as a department as we can be. And I just wanted to highlight that this year, this sort of level of investigating, level of detail, level of questioning toward the department, especially as it relates to homelessness, has been extensive.
So I just want to maybe make you feel slightly better. I met with the state auditor last week, and they were very respectful about the work, about the, the quality of responses they got from you, Jason, and your team. And they were walking away saying that the concerns that they had a couple of years ago have been addressed. So we got a clean bill of health and, from the state auditor, and I just want you to know that it's not all doom and gloom.
Thank you. I mean, you know, we also see the opportunity in it. We've been working very hard to fix and continuously improve some of our processes. And so I think that, you know, these audits will be a bit of vindication, in a way, to show that we are a sound steward of public funds, that we hold and convene the right community partners, and that our direct services are, are quality and inclusive. So I, I'm, I see the opportunity in it, but also wanted to highlight the impact that it can have on staff.
Good, thank you, and good attitude. Anything else down here? All right, I think you've got another slide or two.
I feel like we've addressed majority of this, but this slide is intended to highlight sort of major proposed budget changes. You'll see that these highlight a number of increases. We talked about the expanded food nutrition programs due to the sweet and beverage tax. Audrey spoke a little bit about the, our work countywide to support people in their homes. This Medicaid Transformation Demonstration Project is a grant increase that we'll see in 2019. We also, I mentioned earlier, the contract inflation, adding 2% to general fund contracts. And then our, we will have a very detailed discussion on the 3rd about the increase, 17% increase in our homeless investments.
Good. So I know one thing that's been around the edges for the last couple of years has been the Medicaid waiver, the 1151 waiver, and it was a billion and a half to the state. And I think we've been asking, and Jeff Sakuma had been wonderful about responding, of what is the city and King County's share of that 1.5 billion? Because everything that we can do that would be invested in mental health services, behavioral health services, is going to be helpful to us. So I'd love to know where's, where's that money and what's our share?
Sure.
Thanks. Anything else? Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Go first. Okay. I have a question about the 2% inflationary increase. Just interested to know, is that the inflationary increase that we use from year to year when we're able to give an inflationary increase? There is a contention that it should be higher, more like 3.5%, and just wondering sort of what the, what the thinking is between, behind the 2%?
We haven't had a consistent, consistent practice. There actually have been years where we've awarded no, we've funded no, no increase at all, so. And we, faced with the budgetary pressures around human services in general, we were trying to strike a balance between expanding services, particularly, again, in homeless services, you'll hear more, ever more detail about next Wednesday, and then also increasing the, the base funding for, for the existing services. So I think there, the inflation appears to be creeping up, so I think there is, there is an argument about whether 2% is sufficient. We were, we were balancing, if you will, the quantity and the depths at the same time.
Much, much like our conversation about city services generally, about, about inflation, if you don't provide the funding necessary to cover the inflation, it's going to result in provision of fewer services.
And I think, I mean, another dynamic that is, that is inherent and, and an additional challenge is that the city is, the, the city's general fund is not the only source of supporting these. We are both, we are directly passing, if that's the right term, we are directly or indirectly passing through dollars from other levels of government, and many of our providers are receiving funds from, from other, other entities. And they are, those sources may or may not be providing increases as well, and it's, it's understandable, it's hard for the city to be the one who's going to be, yeah, so admitting that this is a, this is a challenging area, in part because we, in principle, really, because the ever-increasing pressure to increase the quantity of services as well.
Anything else? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Chair Bagshaw. I have a couple questions. I know we're going to go in-depth into investments in the area of homelessness in particular next week, so I'm going to focus on a couple of other areas in the budget book that weren't highlighted in your presentation. So the first one is, on page 165 of the budget book, it talks about shifting the source of funding for the Project Mister program, which is a program that supports Blackmail students at the Seattle Public Schools. I think it's currently funded at $178,500 with general funds, and it appears that there is a recommendation to shift that into the Families in Education, preschool and promise levy, should the voters approve that levy this fall, which makes a lot of sense. It seems to be similar to the ARBAS program, which is currently being, which is currently proposed to be funded through fat dollars. And really, my question is twofold. One is whether Project Mister is going to be rolled into the city's ARBAS program and funding, or whether that's going to continue to be an independent program, as you all have, you know, done your analysis around how to fund that program, or, and then likewise, what engagement was done in the community to inform them of this shift?
I can't actually answer the, answer the second question, but we'll, we can get you that. I can't actually ask, answer the second question, but we'll, we can get you that, that information. In terms of the, obviously, there's a recognition that the two programs are aimed at similar goals, but, but they are structurally different. So at this stage, the decision was made to continue funding both. I think there's, as we look at the efficacy of each, I think, opportunity in the future to identify whether there, it would make sense to bring them together in some way, or to, or to identify the best way to, to address the underlying need.
Okay. Well, I look forward to getting some follow-up information on those particulars. The second piece, and I'm sorry, I was shuffling through, trying to find the actual page number in the budget book, and I was not able to find it fast enough, but it's around the funding related to the Community Facilities Program at HSD. Is this ringing a bell for you guys? Okay. So my understanding is that this particular program provides grants that provide assistance for retrofitting and renovation of childcare facilities. So if I, if my understanding of what the program is, is incorrect, let me know. But assuming that it's correct is, I just wanted to get an understanding of how this particular program works with DEALS efforts related to expanding SPP, SPP-plus classrooms through levy dollars, or if this is some sort of different fund with a different purpose that is not, is for non-SPP providers who are nonetheless providing early learning opportunities in our community. And just, I just, I think overall, want to get a better sense of how this program works, and what type of coordination is going to be occurring between HSD and DEAL.
Great. So I'm happy to send-
181, I've been told by my chair over here.
A lot more information. I think what you're referring to is the Childcare Bonus Fund. Childcare Bonus Fund is a-
No, I'm, I'm referring to, it's Community Facilities.
Yeah. Within the Community Facilities, so we have a federal grants and Community Facilities Unit. They manage a number of different funds, including our Community Development Block Grant, McKinney Vento Dollars. Likewise, they have this Childcare Bonus Fund, which is a fund that's developed, developers pay into this fund, and it is intended to create childcare opportunities in the, kind of the downtown central Seattle core. And it is capital funds, and it's there to ensure that there is childcare near work and home in the downtown core. So I think, you know, I can give you a lot more information about the, the long and successful history of that fund and how it's been used. There have been a number of projects that I'm sure you'll be very familiar with, that have been funded with those dollars. And then I heard your second part of the question is, how are things being coordinated?
Right.
And so I'll also make sure to include that in my response.
That'd be great.
I know, and I've asked the same question in the past myself, and I can't remember the details to answer, because I, in a way you can appreciate, I was looking for opportunities to leverage available funding. I think, I think there are some, the, the Childcare Fund is, again, related to, it's related to zoning height bonuses downtown, and I think it's, it's somewhat restricted, which limits some of that opportunity, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist at all. So we'll get you some more detailed information.
Anything else?
I would note, just something we hadn't emphasized, in that same Community Facilities Program, this, in 2019, we have a significant allocation of some Community Development Block Grant Dollars. As, again, another advantage of shifting to a new accounting system, we were able to identify some Community Development Block Grant Dollars that had been unallocated, and they'd actually, they were, they were several years old, if you will. So there's some urgency about, about getting them spent, but able to allocate better part of $3 million to a number of, a number of projects, assisting Northwest Harvest in relocating the food bank on, that's currently on Cherry, I'm gesturing up the hill, because that's where it is, towards, to new location in Soto, to Evergreen Treatment Services for, to take ownership of the facility that they have in, again, in the-
Airport Way.
On Airport Way, thank you. And then funding, potential funding for youth care in a project they're working on, on Capitol Hill, and then also to, to solid ground, to fix a roof, because water leaking in this, particularly in this climate, doesn't work out. So those are some real, you know, opportunities that we were able to take advantage of on a one-time basis.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbert, were you signaling me?
I'm not.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, thank you, HSD. Thank you for coming. Jeff, welcome to the table. Good to see you. Ben, thank you for this, and we'll look forward to seeing you next Wednesday. So the next department up is our Police Department. Councilmember Gonzalez, can I pass this off to you for an introduction, and I will return?
Sure. Thank you. About 30?
30.
We're putting ourselves here. All right. If you are here to help present on the Seattle Police Department proposed budget, I ask you to quickly settle yourself in. Chief Buss, I'm talking to you.
Well, Baird.
Let's get the show going, because it's 3:16. So let's go ahead and start with introductions.
Greg Doss, Council Central Staff.
Ben Noble, Budget Office.
Carmen Bass, Chief of Police.
Mark Baird interim Chief Operating Officer.
Lisa, do you want to introduce yourself?
Lisa Kay, Central Staff.
Thank you. All right. Greg, did you want to make some introductory remarks?
Sure, I'll, I'll provide just a bit of context for the audience. The Seattle Police Department is a department that receives $363 million in this proposed budget, and has roughly 2,172 FTE of that. There are about 1,457 officers. The agency is primarily, primarily 85% people that are funded with the appropriation. However, I think what you'll see in the presentation before you is that the 10% increase that you'll, you'll see in this budget is also largely technical. I think the budget directors talked a little bit, Director Noble, about central charges and such. So just with that as a high level, I would turn it over to the chief to tell you about the important policy ads.
Great. Chief?
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here, councilmembers. Just have a few opening remarks for you. We're here to discuss, as you know, the mayor's 2019, 2020 budget for the Seattle Police Department. In the past year, the Seattle Police Department has continued to make impressive strides in ensuring we are providing the very best police service we can to the people of Seattle. We were found in full and effective compliance with the Federal Consent Decree, and we have successfully undertaken the necessary sustainment efforts to fully meet the requirements by January 2020. We completed the long ask-for consolidation of the Chinatown ID into one precinct. We completed the deployment of body-worn cameras to all precincts and selected specialty unit personnel, and we've expanded the LEED program into the North Precinct. And we reached unprecedented levels of diversity in our hiring. This last year, we hired 45%, 45% of the people we hire were people of color. This budget continues to support the important work the men and women of the Seattle Police Department have been doing, and continue to do every day and night. As chief, I really believe this budget aligns with my priorities for the department, and I'll briefly go over some of the key priorities. First and foremost is reducing crime and disorder. You know, it is our fundamental responsibility, and the support this budget provides to continue to grow the department is essential in meeting this goal. The department currently has more deployable officers than it has ever had, and we are asking these officers to do more than ever before. Our officers are on the front lines of poverty, of mental health crisis, of homelessness, of behavioral health crisis, and all of the tragedy and unpredictability that is really inherent in the profession of policing, and they're doing so under intense scrutiny. Simply put, we need more officers. We need more officers with diverse backgrounds and experiences, and this budget makes that important strides in this work. Specifically, in 2019, I have established goals for the department, three specific goals. One is reducing motor vehicle theft by 5% for the entire city. Our goal is also to reduce burglary offenses centered on a 5% reduction specifically in the South and Southwest Precincts, which so far this year really have experienced a substantial increase. And finally, I have set a goal of a 2% reduction in our commercial robbery for the city as a whole. The second area that I want to talk about was our commitment to excellence in service. It is my hope that the calling card of the Seattle Police Department is treating every member of our community with respect. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we are going to be the Nordstroms of service to the people of this city. This budget supports this work through the relaunch of the Community Service Officer Program. The CSOs, as they're locally called, will enhance the level of service a department can provide to the community. And another area is going to be honor and professionalism. Whether you're an officer or a civilian employee, working for the Seattle Police Department means something. For those of us who wear the uniform, or those of us who support that, we want to make sure that everyone feels a sense of pride and honor in the work that we're doing, and the investment that we're making in the community, and building the department of the future. This budget supports our continued efforts to implement internal leadership and organizational development efforts. In the past year, I mentioned it before, but in the past year, we launched our Management Development Initiative for sworn supervisors, and the Civilian Leadership Development for civilian leaders. We are going to continue to support and enhance these efforts. We're also pursuing the highest level of business efficiency that we can. As we will discuss today, we have a substantial budget, Greg mentioned that earlier, but now most of it really supports personnel expenses. But we know we must be faithful stewards of our public funds. This budget has the department doing its part to support the general fund through reclaiming salary savings from positions we are not able to fill, as well as further progress on fuel savings. Business efficiency also means using technology to ensure we are providing the best service in the most efficient way possible. This budget supports new work time scheduling systems that will provide us essential tools for managing officer time and officer work. In a few short months, we will deploy the new records management system. I'm really excited about it. While it sounds very boring, we need to have this system, and we're making great progress, and I am confident we, it will ease some of the burdens of report writing, and allow officers to do more work in the field, and particularly more engagement in community policing efforts. And we will replace our mobile data terminals and our in-car video system, they have actually reached their end of life. Modern systems have improved data management tools that will save officers, investigators, and our oversight partners significant effort in reducing and accessing, accessing this information. Finally, this budget ensures we will continue to be guided by data-driven policies and practices. As the city continues to grow, our officers and civilians are asked to address more complex issues. It is essential that we do so in a way that is supported by research or adds to the general knowledge base. With this budget, we add an additional civilian person to do this work. If we are going to be data-driven, we must have the team with the necessary skills to do so. And I just would close by saying, everything we do is geared toward meeting our goals. We are striving to continue to be a national model in community-based, modern-day policing. I look forward to working with each of you as we move together in the future. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you, and I'm sure there will be plenty. Starting down your end?
No. No, I think we should just start the presentation.
All right, let's get going on the slides.
Okay, well, I'll let Ben chime in. The first slide really covers what I talked about earlier, just making sure that we are working on the crime and disorder. You'll see the actual numbers. I mentioned that we want to reduce residential burglary. This year, we've had 3,488 incidents, commercial robberies. We've had 422 incidents at various locations. We know we have repeat locations that we want to focus on and work with those institutions to make sure we're reducing the number of robberies. And then motor vehicle thefts as well, almost 3,000, 2,600 incidents this year.
So can a quick question, you talked about adding more officers. What other tools are you going to be using to reduce residential burglaries?
Well, we have some strategies in place. I can tell you that with the burglaries, we're going to have a, work on our persistent hot, I'm sorry, hotspot policing, easy for me to say, hotspot policing in the areas. We're going to initiate what we call a cocoon-type protocol with outreach to the, on the streets and confirmed in the neighborhoods, and adjust, and adjust our deployment to those areas where there are a lot of burglaries. We can do a lot through education and working with the areas where the burglaries are occurring. We know that one of the things that we're doing is working through Nextdoor and other social media sites to put information out, specifically in areas where we know we've had an increase, so we can target those areas for additional crime prevention through environmental design protocols to help those neighborhoods reduce those burglaries. And also just having increased presence, and also looking at repeat offenders, making sure that we are, you know, getting those people, that they have appropriate consequences for burglaries, and that we're tracking what's happening with them as well.
Great. Good. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Chair Bagshaw. Chief Buss, on this particular slide at the bottom, you referred to the fact that you are undergoing a process of developing 2019 and 2020 goals for crime reduction. And so I wanted to just get a sense from you about two things. One is that this, the Seattle Police Department has been utilizing the Micro Community Policing Plan model, and so I wanted to get a sense from you whether you're going to continue that, that MCPP type of model, and if so, how you are going to utilize the MCPP website and other dashboards in terms of measuring your performance, in terms of meeting your goals for crime reduction.
Great. So the Micro Community Policing Plans, as you know, it was a grassroots program. We worked with the Seattle University and others to, to, one, contact neighborhoods and the 57 neighborhoods in the city, and find out from them, what are your specific concerns? What is it that you want to see the police working on in your neighborhoods? And each year, we go out with the help of Seattle University, and they survey the people there and find out what their primary concerns are. But not only that, we work with the precincts at that level to make sure that we have problem-solving efforts and initiatives to track and make sure that officers are working on the problems that the neighborhood identified. And there are some, some trends and things that are citywide, but there are some also, some things that are specific to each neighborhood. And we want to make sure the officers who work those areas, one, know what the neighborhoods have identified as a problem, and two, have the problem-solving strategies to go out and address those issues. So officers can actually go out, log onto their, into their MDT in a neighborhood, and for example, if car prowls was an issue there, and make sure that they're, you know, giving out flyers, or making arrests, or making, on a car prowler, and whatever it is that might help with that issue, they log it, and we can track it electronically. That's how we're using the data part of this, to see how much effort is going into the area, or how much effort is not going into the area, at which point there'll be a call from myself or one of the bureau chiefs about what is or isn't happening. So it's a real, it's a way for us to track electronically and make sure that we can provide that information out. There's information on dashboards. We are leading the nation in the amount of information we make public for people to look at. If you want to know where biased crimes are occurring, you can get on a dashboard and see that. You want to know what's been identified in your neighborhood as a primary issue, a focus of concern, you can look at that. You want to know how many officers or how much officer time is spent on that issue, that dashboard is available to you as well. So we want to make sure that we continue to be as transparent as possible. They were working with our community partners to address the concerns that they are telling us that they're having in their neighborhoods. And we will continue to work on that program and work with Seattle University on those issues.
And I just want to make sure that as you are continuing the support of the, of the NCPP program, that, that we also add that same sort of layer of transparency and communication that I think you're describing the department has been engaged in over the last several years as it relates to the goals for crime reduction. So I think it's just really important for the department to continue to be very transparent about, one, the process of setting the goals for crime reduction, and, and sort of what does crime reduction mean? And then, secondly, we need to be able to communicate effectively to people who are concerned about, about this issue, the opportunity to evaluate whether or not the department is meeting its stated goals. And so as you are considering your process of developing those goals, I want to encourage you to apply the same level of transparency that currently applies to the MCPP plans. the process of setting the goals for crime reduction and sort of what does crime reduction mean. And then, secondly, we need to be able to communicate effectively to people who are concerned about this issue, the opportunity to evaluate whether or not the department is meeting its stated goals. And so, as you are considering your process of developing those goals, I want to encourage you to apply the same level of transparency that currently applies to the MCPP plans to your department's goals for crime reduction.
Absolutely, we want to work with the community. So, that's a great idea, and we'll make sure that we do that as well.
Good, thank you. Just a quick follow-up on that, Chief Best. I really want to acknowledge and thank you for your community outreach. And you personally, we have seen in parks, we've seen you at 11 o'clock at night places. And I really want you to know that that's recognized and greatly appreciated. We have a new commission that's called the Community Involvement Commission, CIC, which is part of our Department of Neighborhoods. And I don't know whether your police officers have engaged with these folks, but if you haven't, I just would like to put that on your list. These are new voices. Department of Neighborhoods has gone out, and it's beyond our, you know, the neighborhood associations that have been with us for 30 years, and getting new voices, people that are deeply engaged and embedded in their communities, but their voices simply haven't been heard to date. So, I just would like to suggest, and I see that Brian's taking some notes, that we have you connected with that because it is really helpful when people know that you're there and that you can be called.
Great, thank you for that. And our Collaborative Policing Bureau Assistant Chief Adrian Diaz is over that. And he has been working with Andreas already, making sure that we're connected with the Police Department and Department of Neighborhoods on community outreach and community engagement. So, I'll make sure we follow up. Mark has taken those.
Thank you, Mark's got it too.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much, Chief. Chair? Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. As it relates to the setting of crime reduction goals, one, I appreciate that you are using the micro-community plans about what our neighborhoods' priorities are in setting the department's own goals. I think that's really important, and I appreciate that. I appreciate your recognition earlier of the increasing crime experience in Southwest Precinct. I have a thought about our micro-policing plans related to how the department sets its own goals. We also ask the neighborhood to identify its priorities. Could we also ask the neighborhood to work with the department in setting goals? Because I think it's really important not just to look at the city as a whole for meeting our goals to reduce crime, but I think for the areas that have been identified in these plans as priority areas, that the department should work with the neighborhoods in identifying what their reduction goals are. And I think that's just another level of transparency and accountability and collaboration that would be really useful.
Yeah, Councilmember, thank you for saying that. Actually, we've had discussions, again, with our Collaborative Policing Bureau about making sure as we go forward with our micro-plans and we have the identified problem-solving efforts that the officers are using, it would be great if we could connect with the community members so that they have a level of engagement and ownership in those problem-solving efforts. So, that wheel is already moving, but duly noted, and we'll make sure that we continue on with that.
Right, thanks. Very good, thank you, please continue.
So, I'm going to turn it over to Ben. Are you going to talk about these issues or?
Nope, this is all your show, so if it's not you, it's Mark.
Okay, sure. Well, I just want to make sure—I'm happy to go over this. These are our primary performance measures that we're looking at. Technology improvements, you know, we met that goal in terms of the development of the body cameras and smartphones. We're currently deploying smartphones to our officers. And I'll look to Mark to see, we're about halfway through?
Yeah, we've been through about two and a half. We're in the third precinct now as we move through getting patrol smartphones. Longer term, the goal will be to move from just patrol officers to all officers.
And Chief and Mark, I want to say thank you on that. You may recall that last budget that this came up, and several officers had talked to me about, "Man, we just want a smartphone," so that they could stay connected to what's going on back at the department. And it struck me as one of those, well, a small, relatively small investment for the value. So, delighted to see that you were able to accomplish that.
Yeah, I have to give credit and kudos to Mark for getting that process going and getting everybody trained and with the new phones. But yeah, we do have them, and we're moving forward on that. The second improvement is going to be with our new records management system. I mentioned this earlier. We're on schedule to have that implemented in the first quarter of 2019. This will provide officers with the most up-to-date and current way of using data to, you know, in their job and provide them, because it's more efficient, provide them with extra time that they can utilize for other activities such as community policing efforts. And then, final—
Chair Bagshaw, if I can talk about the RMS system. So, this is Chief Best sort of joked that it sounds boring, but it's really important. She's very accurate around that. And so, I just wanted to talk about the RMS system really quickly, that this is a bucket of money that has been under proviso by the City Council pending further evaluation and making sure that the Police Department and Seattle IT were on sort of continuing to be on track in terms of timing of the implementation, but also in terms of development of the product itself. And so, as a mechanism for the City Council to exercise a little bit more control over the integrity of this contracting project, we had provisoed these funds. So, this will be an opportunity for us to lift that proviso and allow the Police Department to advance. And they have been very gracious to allow me to continue to be a bee in their bonnet and annoy them and pester them about privacy concerns in the contract language that they had with a third-party technology provider. They have been very transparent with me around those issues and have done a lot of work to advocate to make sure that we are not running afoul of our privacy values at the City of Seattle as this product is developed and considered. And so, I think we'll hear more about this through our issue papers and making sure that it is where it needs to be in terms of the contract language. And just wanted to flag that for my colleagues. The second thing on that slide was the work scheduling and timekeeping system. That is/was a key recommendation out of the City Auditor's Office as it relates to being able to better account for overtime and accountability for overtime. There were instances, for example, in the City Auditor's Report talking about overtime being charged for more hours than there are available to be charged in terms of the number of hours in a day, for example. And so, I think this work scheduling and timekeeping system is going to go a long way towards creating less administrative burden for the officers who are being asked to log their time and for supervisors who are responsible for reviewing the time that is being logged by officers. And it also allows us an opportunity to—it allows a department an opportunity to be able to better account for how overtime is being utilized and by whom it's being utilized. So, I think this timekeeping system, it goes a long way towards finding addition— will go a long ways towards helping us identify future budget efficiencies as a result of being a much better way to capture overtime that is being worked by our officers.
Absolutely, we are looking forward to getting this work schedule-timing system in place. Like you said, it will help us track better real-time, you know, the amount of time that we're spent in overtime, amount of hours are spent by officers in the overtime in a more efficient manner. And nothing would be more important. And again, it was one of the suggestions from the audit. Additionally, I will say that even without that in place, we've already reduced our overtime expenditures so far this year. We're really tracking it as closely as we can with the antiquated systems that we have. We are absolutely looking forward to the new system. I think that it would be a great benefit to all of us.
I would just add that these are both significant IT investments and actually that investments that potentially will require significant business process changes. So, change management is an integral part. And there's a governance structure around each. I happen to serve on the steering committee for both. It's just—I have some knowledge about this. And I partnership between the departments—actually, I say departments because the Fire Department also has an interest in a scheduling and timekeeping system. And actually, just made a decision on a vendor to provide both departments the systems that they need, although their needs are slightly different. So, anyway, there's a partnership there between the departments and IT. We have some outside assistance as well in terms of managing the project. So, we're not done, so I'm not going to guarantee results at this point, but I wanted to let you know there is a good governance structure, and we're regularly tracking project status and the like.
And just for central staff's benefit, I think it would be— because the investment in these IT infrastructure projects is so significant, I think it is important for us to make sure that we put this on the table as an issue for future briefings during our work sessions and budget, just to make sure that we all have a sense and a level of comfort around the investment that we're making and that governance model that you have just described, Director Noble. So, I think it's going to be important for us to make sure that we have a level of confidence around the integrity of the IT project as it moves forward once we—and if we approve lifting the proviso and releasing the final funds.
Oh, we're—I'm sorry, were we going to discuss the staffing?
Yeah, do you want to get to that? That's number three?
I just noticed that we were switching the slide. I'm like, oh.
That was me, sorry.
How excited about that? Please.
You can see our staffing and hiring goals this year, our status and our projected that are listed up there. We know that we have, you know, some difficulty right now in getting, you know, the additional resources that we need, the additional staffing in the Police Department. But we do—we are working really diligently to recruit and hire more officers on to the Police Department at this time. We're down a little bit on our hiring numbers. I think the addition of having the—hopefully, a police contract that, you know, with your graces will be ratified at some point would be great. We also are doing some additional recruiting across the country. You know, this is not an issue that is unique to the Seattle Police Department. It is a nationwide issue of just staffing shortage in, you know, in public service, whether it's teaching, policing, and other fields. But we want to make sure that we're doing all that we can at the Seattle Police Department to hire and recruit a diverse— both a diverse and increase in numbers that we're bringing out to the organization. So, we feel fully supported in that, yes.
I beg your pardon, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're right, go ahead.
So, at least in the past couple of years, we have heard allegations from some of our companion districts that people have been stealing our police officers or there have been signing bonuses. Two questions. One, what are we going to do? Let's just assume for a moment that all contracts have been signed, blessed, approved, and that we're moving forward with a raise in pay as anticipated. What do you see in terms of what can we do to attract people to the Seattle Police Department? And then, also, I think last year, once again, it just seems like last week, but I think in our last budget season, we talked about, do we have to wait for every six months in order to do hiring? Or are there ways that we can do it more frequently?
Yeah, we're moving forward on increasing our hiring, you know, the testing and all that for hiring. You know, our HR director, he's elevated now to, you know, our HR executive because we feel like it's so incredibly important that we focus on the personnel in our organization. There's really nothing more important than getting the personnel in and getting the right personnel in. So, we're not going to in any way diminish or reduce the standards, but we do want to be more intentional and more—with more of a sense of urgency about getting employees onto the Police Department. Some of the things that we're doing are really increasing our base in terms of really targeting a whole host of affinity groups and other groups that we think can help us. And we're also in our recruiting, making sure that we are looking to recruit people who are really civic-minded and want to give back to the community. Our recruiting videos have changed. It's not just car chases and gunfights as some people see on TV. This really is a police service. We want to make sure that we're appealing to people who want to give back, who want to serve the community. Because by and large, what we're doing when we're in the field is a service. We're, you know, reaching people at the most vulnerable moments and trying to assist them. So, we really want to make sure that we have a cast a wide net in that realm as well. And of course, you know, if we get the opportunity to give signing bonuses and those things, you know, that makes us more competitive with some of our neighboring agencies. So, anything that we can do in that regard would be helpful as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Purple, did you have a follow-up?
Thank you. This is a repeat of a question that I tried to ask Director Noble the other day, and he said I should hold it until you were with us.
Oh, thank you, Ben.
Anytime.
There has been some back and forth in the press, as you're aware, about whether or not there is an uptick in the number of separations that SPD is experiencing. COO Brian Maxey and Seattle Times refuted that claim and basically argued that 41 officers had left at that point in, you know, that year, this year. This was like in, I think, in July that this was asked. And it was 39 over the same period last year. So, not looking like a large increase in separations over previous years. Is that accurate, or are we experiencing something different?
Yeah, you know, we have seen an uptick in some departures from the organization. Some of that, you know, we're anticipating is going to happen just with—if the new contract is ratified, some people hold on, and that's pretty typical for a contract year. But we have seen a slight rise in the number of officers leaving. Where we're seeing the most difficulty, though, is getting—is hiring people and bringing them into the organization. And that has been much more of a critical emphasis that we need to focus on.
And so, in past years, when we've talked about this, there's the question of recruiting and the question that always comes up every year, I think, which is space in the academy. Is the issue—because we only have so many training spaces, I believe, because there's an academy that all of the local police departments all use, and so, there are only so many classroom spaces. Is the issue the front-end recruiting or that we can only recruit for as many spaces as we have?
We need to recruit more people. Our recruiting is down, and we need to hire more people. And I have assurances from the academy that they'll work with us. If we got the numbers that we needed, they would help us getting those folks in. But we haven't been able to reach those goals yet, so we're working really hard on that.
And my last question is—I'm sure this is the experience of people who participate in developing micro-policing plans all over the city, but I'm more familiar with what's going on in my district. Of the 12 planning areas for doing micro-policing plans in the Southwest District, all 12 of them have identified police capacity and their visibility as their top issue. Now that we're almost at 100 over the 2014 hiring goals, there was the goal to bring on 100 new positions. We're almost there. Is there going to be sort of a planning process moving forward to figure out sort of what the—now that we've met those expansion goals, to figure out what the right size is for our department to grow as we move forward in future years? I also—I mean, I think we've experienced more population growth than we anticipated in 2013 when the 2014 plans were developed. So, I just would be interested to know what sort of planning work we're going to be doing moving forward.
Yeah, we're always looking at ways we can increase the visibility and officers in the field. You know, we have competing mandates and responsibilities working with—you know, we've had officers we've had to deploy to, you know, navigation team or other, you know, other areas. So, that siphons off a little bit out of patrol. But we're looking at ways like through our new records management system, there should be a more efficient way to, you know, process reports and get information and paperwork done so that officers can spend more time in the field. And we're looking at all sorts of avenues as to how we can get more people in patrol and what the right deployment is for all of our area—for every area of the city.
So, maybe to ask my question differently. Now that we've grown our department an additional 100 officers over the 2014 numbers, which was our growth plan for the department, are we going to continue to do a—some sort of a planning process to figure out what the right size for the department is moving forward?
You're talking about our overarching staffing for the department. Yeah, we have a goal of—I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think our 20—there it is, 1497. We think that that is a good goal to go for in our current environment. You know, certainly, if you ask me, you know, ideally, I'd like to have a lot more than that. But realistically, you know, that's going to be a tough one to meet already. So, we're going to work really hard to meet that goal. We're going to deploy our resources in the field as needed as best we can and make sure that we're giving opportunity for officers to have higher visibility in the field. I think even adding our Community Service Officer— I think even adding our community service officers will give us additional visibility, additional contact with the department, the uniformed personnel, and provide the service that people are asking for. Does that help you, council member?
We had a planning goal for many years, right? We had a, it was about a four-year period of time where we were seeking to add 100 new positions over that period of time.
There was then a commitment, at least on the part of then Mayor Murray, for an additional 100, so for a 200 net?
There was two from the, 200 from the previous administration?
Yeah.
Yes. There was an initial 100, that was increased to 200 at one point, not necessarily based on a complex planning process, but more a general sense of need.
May I? Yeah, sure. Let me see if I can give it a go. Thank you. You're welcome. I think, you know, I think that setting the goals is one thing, and this is sort of what I was trying to highlight around the crime reduction goals that you were describing, Chief Buss. And I think setting a goal and having a process to set a goal is an important thing for the department to do.
Certainly.
That is separate and apart from how do we make sure that there is a path forward that creates the greatest level of success for achievement of that goal? And I feel like we were missing that from 2014 until now. So we had heard that there was a goal set of 200 officers over four years, but the way or the path to get there was, I think, absent for the large part. That doesn't mean that the department didn't have a plan to figure out how to get to 200. It might just be that we, as the city council, were unaware of what those plans were. And so I think now we have an opportunity to do a couple of things. One is to evaluate whether the goal that you have articulated here, which is effectively 40 additional officers over the next two years, is correctly set. In other words, is it too small? Is it too big? Or is it just right? And I don't, and for me, as a council member, it's hard for me, I'm not a cop, it's hard for me to evaluate whether that's the right number. And so we're going to need some information from you to be able to test whether or not we have a high level of confidence that 40 is the right number, given the population growth that the city of Seattle is currently experiencing and some of the crime data that you have been describing throughout this hearing, but also in many other settings besides this hearing. And so we want to make sure that, I think, that number is set correctly. And then, once we have confidence in what that number is, how do we, as a city council, understand so that we can evaluate the department's success or lack of success in achieving the goals that it has set as it relates to hiring, recruitment, and retention? And certainly, I think there's an interest in making sure that we have sort of that type of plan available so that not just we as council members have confidence in it, but that members of the public who, frankly, this is one of the things that I get asked about all of the time. It's a trend that pops up in all of the micro-community policing plans, is sort of a lack of, whether it's perception or not, it doesn't matter at this point, but a real strong feeling within just about every single neighborhood that there aren't enough police. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to try to figure out, how do we daylight what the strategy is going to be on behalf of the police department to achieve whatever goal is set? Thank you.
Absolutely. I agree. And I think that we get, a good path moving forward is to make sure that we're working with you and letting you know every step of the way. There are a lot of variables in that. There's no magic number that, or formula for every agency across the country. If there was, we would have had views of it already. So we're really looking at, what, past information, who can we effectively recruit, how many people are out there that we can bring into our organization? How many folks can we hire? How can we have a wider net in casting that recruiting out there? And what do we need that's viable to keep us more visible and apparent to the public? I hear those same concerns. This is something that we're going to have, it's nuanced, and we're going to have to work through it in terms of what we're hearing from the community and also what we can reasonably do. And some of that's going to be based on our past experiences, or we look forward to seeing what else we can implement in the future.
Yeah, so Greg, I think just for purposes of flagging and putting this in the queue for potential issue identification is, I think, I think what you're hearing from us is that we want to have a more formal, solidified way to be able to evaluate whether or not the department is meeting the stated goal. So I understand that there's no magical answer. I mean, Lord knows, if I could find magic, I'd use it every day. But I do think, I feel like I need a more formal process by which to evaluate how the department is advancing on this particular goal. And so happy to work with you and Director Noble on figuring out what that mechanism could look like.
Right, sure. Because the 40 is the number we think we can realistically achieve, but we're happy to bring in our HR folks and Ben and look at what options are out there and what we can do more of. Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, and Greg did a good job of sharing with me and some of the members of my committee in terms of what the hiring summary is with actuals through July 2008, including the mayor's proposed add. And it definitely tells a story that retention is not necessarily the issue. It is the fact that we are not getting enough new hires in the door.
That's correct.
And not quickly enough. And so I think, and the reality is, is that the SPD force is aging, and some of those separations are certainly attributable to retirements as opposed to being recruited by a different agency. And so I want to make sure that we have as clear information as we can on both those new hire issues and the separation issues, so that when we're asked questions about the cause of why people feel like there aren't enough police resources available, then I want to be able to answer those questions with the most accurate information possible.
Absolutely. We'll make sure you have all the information.
Thank you. So according to what's in front of us here, we're on Slide 1. And maybe we could move on to Slide 2.
Slide 2.
Actually, we're on Slide 2, but we can get to 3 as well.
She already went through Slide 3.
I think we've done a lot of this already, but please.
Been there, done that.
So we covered that, business efficiencies.
Covered four.
So budget summary.
Yeah, this is a place, Mr. Doss already mentioned this. You see, this is appropriations, again, essentially all general fund, actually directly all general fund to SPD. I just want you to note that there's a significant increase, rough terms 10% for 2019, but that is, again, this internal restructuring that we've done and directly allocating some centralized costs.
We're back to accounting, not diminution services.
Yeah, and it's not the only increase, but you get, I just wanted you to see that.
Thank you.
And then I think there's not a whole lot of action there. We've talked, I mean, the most significant issues around the staffing adds and the technology, which we have already talked about both. And then, I don't know if you want to, maybe?
I really covered that earlier, just to say that we were in full and effective compliance, and we are moving toward maintaining our sustainment period, which is continuous improvement and innovation, and we're committed to it, and we're going to keep that moving forward. And we're going to hit every milestone that we can and make sure that we continue to improve as an organization.
And I would just add, elsewhere in the budget, there are allocations to the Community Police Commission and to the Office of Inspector General that are all part of reaching full and effective compliance with DOJ as well.
All the way to Slide 5. Well done.
So, and then on the major proposed budget changes, you can see the, on the hiring side, this is, this perhaps looks a little odd because what you see is a reduction associated with sworn hiring, even though we're talking about adding 10 officers. And I wanted, the full transparency here, just to be clear about this, is that the 2018 budget was, for SPD, was built on the assumption that they would achieve a net addition of just 37 officers. Given the separations and the challenges in recruiting, that has not happened. So we wanted to be very clear about, as we do our baselining process, we were adjusting for the fact that there had not been 37 officers added, so there's a reduction associated with that. And then, that's the 3.6, if you will. Oh, that's, and then there's, in addition, of roughly $1 million to account for the fact that we intend to add 10. So that was a transparency about not having achieved the 37 and then resetting about, okay, the goal is going to be 10. As a result of the department not achieving that, the net 37 addition, there is also, in the third quarter supplemental that we have sent you, the technical term is an abandonment of, I think the figure is roughly $4 million of SPD's budget for 2018, because those are not resources they're going to need, because officers, we did not achieve that hiring. The abandoned, those resources are abandoned and then have been used to balance the budgets for 19 and 20. So we've captured those savings as well. And then in terms of other additions, as mentioned, the Community Service Officer Program, CSOs, total of 12, two supervisors. I don't know, Chief, if you want to mention the, I'm going to, Community Engagement Bureau, I'm going to miss the name.
Policing.
Thank you. And the CSO's role in there.
They'll be a part of the Collaborative Policing Bureau, which is a bureau that we have that will essentially work on having directed and intentional outreach to communities to build engagement. So the CSOs will work in that bureau.
Do you have officers that get to volunteer for this as contrasted to being voluntold?
Yeah, they do volunteer, which to me is an indication that, one, our reform efforts are working. We have officers, I've been here 26 years, as you know, we have a lot of officers who are volunteering to do a lot more engagement, work with the community, be a part of our police athletic league, join in different events. So I feel really good about that. We will turn more people away that we don't have positions for in that bureau than in the past.
Good for you.
Sure, Bagshaw.
Please.
First of all, I want to commend you for the use of the term voluntold. Well done. Secondly, on the CSO program, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the CSO officers are not going to be sworn officers. Is that accurate?
Yeah, they're not sworn officers.
So these are civilians who serve in a particular role to effectively be public safety liaisons between the department and members of the public, dealing with nonviolent sort of more, you know, simpler issues.
We see them providing a service gap that we have. And if I had to give an example, for example, if they're, when officers respond to a home, sometimes they come across something like an elderly person who, while there's no criminal issue that we need to deal with, maybe they need some additional services and referral, and this is an opportunity for a CSO to come in and do some of that work, make the referrals, assist in that way, also be a resource for us as we're going to community events and community meetings, another uniform presence representing the police department and providing public engagement and opportunities in that fashion.
So one of the things that has come up for me in the last year, and I know my colleagues have heard me say this way too many times, but I am very interested in our first responders and dealing with people who are on the street, whether it's mental health or behavioral health problems, that we're getting the right people around them with the right services and being able to get the folks who are on the street into the right place in a timely way, whether it's the sobering center or our crisis solutions center. And I know the 911 calls flow through you as well as the fire department, but at some juncture here, I'd like to sit down with you to be able to think about the systems approach. And I have talked with Chief Scoggins about this. What can we do to be supportive so that the burden isn't falling on officers or on firefighters as first responders alone, but that we've got a system that plays well and that we can really have confidence that we're getting the right response to the right individual? I just have this sense that everybody's doing good work, everybody's intentions are great, but I don't have, I don't have the sense that our whole system is working well together, whether it's working with Harborview or the public health clinics that we talk about. So I know this is wishful thinking on my part, it's more complicated than just saying we're going to try something new, but I'd love for us to be thinking about, what are the outcomes we're looking for? And do we have the right resources and the right approaches?
Yeah, I'd happily engage in that conversation because the intersection of public health and public safety is really complex. As you know, we respond along with the fire department to a number of calls where referral services are needed. So that's a conversation we should continue to have, absolutely.
Good. And one of the things we've brought up here just in the last two days is seeing what other cities have done with a response that doesn't require full-blown, you know, two ladder trucks or an ambulance, but that there's, and I'm focused now on a program that Colorado Springs and Tempe, Arizona, has done, so that they are responders, they are firefighters, they are police department folk, but they're, it doesn't require, as I said, two ladder trucks to come out and get one individual. It is a different type of team that they can coordinate with Harborview as well. Do you need to take them to Harborview, or is there a less expensive place that can provide them better care?
Well, it's going to depend, yeah, what the issue is, of course, where they end up being transported, but yeah.
Right. So it's a, I know it's hugely complicated, but boy, do I think that we could do our system in such a way that we've got the right people responding with an overall lessening of costs and burdens to the whole system.
Absolutely.
But we'll talk about that another day. Councilmember Pearl.
Thank you. As it relates to the CSO program, thank you for, you're restoring it. It's something that I think this council and prior councils have really valued its work. And given that, you know, we got rid of the CSO program in a downturn, and we aren't in one currently, although there's one predicted around the corner, I think this is really important work to restore to the department. I'd be interested to know when you're anticipating those positions coming on. And as well, I understand that the job descriptions were developed using an RET process, and I'm very interested to know what the job descriptions are, because the old CSO program performed some really important civil functions as it relates to tenants' rights. The community service officers, when tenants were unlawfully locked out of their apartments, when the property owner did not follow the law for properly evicting somebody, they called a lockout, the CSOs would intervene and let the property owner know that that is not a legal thing for them to do. They did the same thing with utility shut-offs. And even though it's a civil issue and technically it's something that is, a city employee can't force the landlord to open up a unit that has been locked unlawfully, nevertheless, a CSO telling a property owner that what they're doing is illegal is a very powerful incentive to that property owner to correct the situation. And so it just was an incredibly important role that CSOs played back in the old days. And so I'm really interested to know what the job description looks like and what sort of, what sort of actions we are expecting for that body of work.
Right. In answer to your first question, we plan to fire, plan to hire, that is, the first batch, the first batch of CSOs in the first quarter of 2019 and then in the third quarter of 2019 as well. We've left their job description somewhat vague as we make sure that we get them in, get them trained, and are making sure that we're evolving and adapting to our current needs. What they're doing now may not be what we need to do, need them to do five years from now. So there certainly will be an educational component there, where when there are disputes, they can certainly provide information to landlords and others about what they legally can or cannot do, and also to the tenants. So I see a role there as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. And if I may?
Please.
The, I think it's fair to say that the job description and the restoration of the CSO program really, really came out of an IDT that came together that really sort of dug into the work around what was the history of this program, what did it, how was it utilized in the past? And there was some visioning around how could it be best leveraged moving forward? So I think that, once we see the job description and a clearer summary from the department around the intent of how to utilize... around the intent of how to utilize CSOs, we will, we will, I think, see a set of recommendations and vision around it that has been influenced and shaped by the members of the interdisciplinary team. I'm not sure that it's going to be broad enough to include what you've described, but it's certainly, you know, when we look at reinstituting the program, I think it's, it's important to make sure that we start it correctly again. And just really quickly, you know, the design summary that I received talks about how the SPD Community Service Officers Unit will be staffed by non-commissioned officers who are trained and work as liaison personnel between the community and the Police Department. CSOs do not carry weapons nor enforce criminal laws. Instead, they serve to bridge the service gap on non-criminal calls for service and perform a variety of public safety-related community service work that does not require the enforcement authority of a sworn police officer. And later on, it talks about how really the expectation of these individuals will be to allow them to be system navigators effectively to be able to really connect an individual and shepherd an individual through police operations, social work, all of those things in a way that is focused on actually connecting and, and trying to identify a solution to the person's issue as opposed to criminal law enforcement. And so, you know, I think when we think about the work that we've done with the Fire Department around identifying different creative solutions in terms of how they respond to incidents, I think the CSO program is going to be a similar type of effort and relief for the Seattle Police Department to be able to use the resource that CSOs provide to really deal with some of the nonviolent public safety concerns that neighborhoods and people in the community are expressing. And I think that's going to be really invaluable both to your officers, but also to the community. And I, I also want to express my gratitude to you and the mayor for incorporating funding into this proposed budget to stand up the CSO program.
And I just, it was a distinct priority of the mayor as she, as she came in, made it very clear from day one, this was, this was going to happen. And again, in a somewhat difficult climate, that was, a sense that priority was, was, was very important as we put together the budget.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Well, I want to thank you. Thank you for being with us. And again, thank you for being our new chief. It's just a real pleasure to see the community action that you're leading and back, back to our Police Department as a whole, but to our community as well. Thank you very much. Mark Baird, welcome back. We always like seeing you. Ben, appreciate your good work. Now, the next meeting of this committee will be next Wednesday. That's going to be October 3rd at 9:30. And we will have an entire day that is focused on homelessness and affordable housing. And all departments are going to be included and invited to come talk with us about what we are doing, what progress is being made and how we can really move forward in addressing the needs of our community. We have a number of people signed up. Is this it? We've got nine today? Okay. Thank you very much. So we're going to proceed with public comment. I'm going to ask the speakers to be close to the microphone. James Walker, is it Makovich, and Marshawn Evans. So if you three will approach the microphones, or at least raise your hand, tell me if you're here. Okay? Please, you're up. Nice to see you.
Hi, my name is Sochi Makovich and I'm with Washington Community Action Network and I'm also a co-chair of the Seattle Women's Commission. Through the Women's Commission, we did an analysis of all of the evictions that happened last year and in addition to interviewing tenants and service providers. And I think something that's incredibly important to highlight, in addition to what was highlighted earlier, is that the default rate was almost, was about 46 or 47%. So that means almost half of the tenants didn't even show up in court.
So Sochi, hold on a second. Mr. Zimmerman, if you're going to sit there, please don't wave your sign. Go ahead, Sochi.
Okay.
And, and so that means, in our experience, that is largely because they don't know about the services provided. And so I think it's incredibly important for enough resources to be provided to ensure that we can do direct engagement and education of tenants. Just a comparison, when the minimum wage was passed, the city invested over $3 million in education. There have been many laws regarding tenant protections that have been passed and the city has not done anywhere near that amount of, of education. In addition, the Housing Justice Project served 870 clients last year that were in Seattle. And the City of Seattle does not give any funding to HJP. And Kirkland, Taquilla, they give funding to HJP. And that's the only legal service provider that's actually in the courthouse. And in addition to the courthouse model, it's, that's not a unique thing. If you look at New York City, I was there earlier this year, you can go into the housing court, there's one office where you can get rental assistance, right across the hall, you can go get a lawyer that you need, and then there's social workers. It's all really centralized. So as you're going through this traumatic experience, you can hopefully get the money to prevent it. But in addition, you can get the legal services and social, social workers to help you navigate everything.
Thank you, Sochi. Thank you for coming and thank you for being part of this. Appreciate your good work. James Walker, I've called his name once, twice. Okay? Marshawn Evans, then Jason Swain, and then Marguerite Richard.
Oh, I guess they left, huh?
All right, so Marshawn Evans, Jason Swain, don't see them? Okay, Ms. Richard, you're up. After Marguerite Richard, we've got the Honorable Michael Fuller, Mr. Zimmerman, then we'll move on.
Yes, Ms. Richard here. And I don't blame them. I mean, my whole body is shipwrecked right now. And I think this is the worst sadistic form of government that I've ever and not even had the privilege to address, but they should have sank a long time ago, just like the Titanic. That's just the way I feel right about now. Hmm? And I want you to know it. Even in spite of all the stuff that we have heard down through the years, we're already approaching the end of the year. And, and folk asking folk, where do we go from here? Wherever you going, I ain't going with you. Because like I said, that mess, that fascism that I keep hearing ringing in my ear and the corruptness and the conspiracy and the racketeering, all the way to Washington DC with that mess, me too, and that woman and that man and him crying, saying, I didn't do it. I bet you there's some folk out there waiting to get the same thing that is going on in Washington DC, like they, like they say, because of me. If you got to get some handcuffs on you because of me, so be it. Because everything to me is out of order. And I serve a God that puts things in order. And he has a mandate that you obviously are not quickened to in your mortal body about what is going on. I have to go home and wake up and see this mess? How many times a week is Alex Zimmerman down here telling you about yourself? And anybody else that doesn't agree with the corruptness that's going on at said time? Zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Yes, I'm Michael Fuller, SUI George. As I continue in prayer, I seen this circus yesterday with you all, Sally Bragshaw and the gang. I don't like the way you're conducting yourself. You know, I distinctly stated you openly violating that Federal Immigration National Act, Title A, USC 1324A, emperances, one emperances, A emperances, IV emperances, B emperances, three I's emperances, INA 274A, eight emperances, one emperances, eight emperances, Title A, USC 1325, improper entry, aliens. Aliens are smart, they can learn. Title eighteen, USC Chapter 73, obstruction of justice. I told you that yesterday. But you tend to breach your contract, breach your trust with flawed intent against we the people. I can only hold you by the contract. And that's that, your oath of office and the Constitution of the United States. But the state constitution is in conflict with the United States Constitution with the illiterate nine bigots on this city council just making illegal and unconstitutional law. Why in your budget, I want to know, how you can give $11 billion to unauthorized undocumented aliens and our veterans sleeping on the street? Y'all need to answer this, all nine of y'all. I told you, you violate RCW 2.24.210, your oath on admission, RCW 2.24.020, your oath in RCW 2.04.080, your oath to office and 98.36.080 and Part 2.52.020, meaning activities incompatible with public duties and Part 9.60.030, freedom from discrimination. And you're not enforcing the Ode to American Act of 1965 that was signed by...
Is there a gentleman named Mike out here? And I think there's Shawna loose here? I think it's everybody else. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
No, no, Alex Zimmerman, you're supposed to be, you're supposed to be...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zimmerman? I forgot.
Exactly. Please, give me my two minutes.
You got it. Give Mr. Zimmerman his two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hello, show my face. Good, thank you very much. Yeah, my name is Alex Zimmerman and people know me from Tacoma to Everett. I want to speak about something what is, I'm totally confused. We have a...
You are totally confused.
Yeah, we have a council policy, number C, Public Comment in City Council Meeting, Community Pickings, is page 38. From my understanding, when we're talking about $6 billion, we need to give chance people speak to every department money because it's us money, it's us $6 billion. But there's only one point and another part absolutely critical because in this situation, you're acting very aggressively in the pure harassment. Again, Mayor Durkan and again, 700,000 people in Seattle. Because you don't give, Mayor Durkan, you don't give a chance talking about something what is very important. You acting like a führer and accumulate all power, don't give a chance speak. We're talking about $6 billion in couple dozen departments. And I give you a classic example. As police here, talking and talking about crime, but nobody mentioned how many people killed, police killed in 2018 and how much the plan will be for killing in 19 and 20 and how much this cost. And a little bit surprised about Lorena Gonzalez, she talking and talking and talking and talking, but she's attorney, never ask policeman, how many people will be dead for another couple year and how much this cost? It's a ton of money cost us, a million and million dollars. And Gonzalez, attorney, who are responsible for all city, never did this question. Why? She's stupid or she's a crook? It's exactly what has happened now. So right now, guys, I spoke to you and everybody, they hire my two, two clans, a crook, a criminal and a critina. Thank you very much. I very appreciate it, so you give them chance to speak.
No kidding. Aren't you funny? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned for today. Thank you, Mr. Security. Thank you, Honorable Mr. Fuller.